Because there's a town meeting very shortly.
Well, first of all, I just want to uh thank you all for serving as commission members. It's such a vital, vital role. And I think that a lot of people around town don't realize that you have the backbone of the towns, these voluntary commissions that serve in many, many different capacities for the town are so valuable. So the town could not run without you. So I thank you for taking the time. I thank you for your service. But I also think that we owe it to you to give you the resources, the information, the education you need to serve on boards. That's only, that's only right. So um that's part of the reason why I wanted to be part of this educational session tonight. So again, just really to inform you and educate you, many faces I know I've seen around, and I think you probably know great about boards and commissions, uh others who are a lot of new members. Uh so I'm going to, I'm going to approach this from the standpoint that the things that I would like to know if I were your in city, your seat when I was serving on for twenty or so years on various boards and commissions, Bethel, what it would have been helpful for me to have known. Well, I'm going to cover certain things and Attorney Andrews is going to cover other things. So I'm going to be more focused on um the charter, the DEPO charter and code, the charter and the ordinances and the zoning regulations, subdivision regulations and weapons uh regulations, those are encompassed in the charter. Um I'm sorry, they're of those documents all together by the code and they encompass those things, right? Ordinances and charter and those uh regulations I just spoke of. Those are online and accessible, easily accessible. Um and so you know, they are there to look at and and anytime that you need to. Um and I also want to talk to you a little bit about the Roberts Rules of Order. So those are the recognized rules which meetings are held and conducted and why that's important. And then I also want to talk a little bit about freedom of information because public agencies conduct the public business and the records are public and people have access to them. And the way you conduct meetings and the way you make information available and your transparency is a way to avoid being brought before the F L I Commission with a complaint. Okay, so we we don't want you to be in that in that position. So we want to tell you the things that you need to do to avoid that. All right? Uh because you know, and I know that the type of work that you do, people are looking and you're scrutinizing. And you know, you want to uh be okay with that, right? Okay, uh so uh it's already been said that I'm leaving at six forty-five to attend a special town meeting. If you have any questions about anything that I say and you have any follow-up questions, please let either Beth or David know and make him reach out to me because um I want you to know that there's always access to information that you need. It's not just tonight one and done. If you have concerns or questions, please let us know so we can get get those answered for you. And lastly, I have been told that when I lecture and talk and I used to teach parallel courses, I tend to repeat myself. And that's not because I'm losing it, it's for emphasis, okay? So if I say things more than once, say, oh, that must be important, okay? All right. Uh and so again, the sources for my talk are the DEPO Charter and Code available on the Town of Bethel website, the Freedom of uh Information Commission website, and also Roberts Rules of Order, Flain Language Edition. That I had here. But it's um Flain Language Edition by a woman named Doris Zimmerman. Um so and that's just a very easy, easily digestible resource also. Right. So I'm going to start with the Town of Bethel Charter. This is kind of dry. I'll do the best I can. Um so I think you should know these things though. Eligibility for office. You have to be a resident elector so you have to be a voter here in Bethel. Uh if you and you have to reside in Bethel. And if you cease to reside in Bethel, then you need to um resign your seat because you no longer have the ability to serve on on a commission in Bethel. And also, no employee may serve on any town board or commission if that entity exercises direct supervision or has responsibility for direct supervision of that employee. So that really just makes sense, right? If if you should not be um an employee of a board of commission having direct supervision over you, that would seem to be a conflict, right? Okay, uh there are general powers and duties. Um you know, land use commissions are elected, so you're you are voted in. And if there are vacancies somewhere during the term, then those vacancies are filled by appointment. Okay, um now, general procedure. So some general procedural things are that elective boards and commissions annually elect a chairman and vice chairman. At least a chairman and vice chairman. And they also have the ability to make regulations for the conduct of their meetings and they file them with the town clerk. Before January thirty-first of each year, they file the schedule of regular meetings. And why do they do that? Well, regular meetings, you should, boards and commissions should be meeting regularly. And the regular meetings um are, you know, are posted and you're available. And of course, if a regular meeting were to get canceled, maybe a snow event, then you reschedule the meeting on a day that's not a regular meeting day. That becomes a special meeting. There are also things called emergency meetings. There are really emergency circumstances that you have to go to meeting. You take minutes of your meetings, you record votes of your meetings. And you should have public input at your meetings. So according to the charter, you should have public input at all your regular meetings. Now, there is a court of ethics that regulates a kind of people that serve on boards and commissions. Sometimes the first office was in the charter as well as employees. So also, not surprisingly, well, I hope it's not surprising, that if you had a conflict and you were serving on a board of commission and you were acting to approve a contract, a transaction, some type of decision on behalf of the town, if you had a direct um benefit, financial benefit to that, um you, under the terms of the conflict of interest section, you need to disclose in writing that conflict to the Board of Selectmen. You need to say, I am so-and-so and I'm going to be the recipient of a vast amount of money if the subdivision is approved. Yes.
Do you have to disclose that only if you're going to participate in the proceedings or if you recuse yourself, do you still need to?
I think you should disclose it under any circumstances.
Thank you.
Um so conflicts of interest, so obviously having a direct or indirect financial interest in a contract, transaction or decision in which you are directly involved or you may influence the outcome. Uh violation of that provision carry penalty of removal. Um and again, this applies to employees as well as people who serve on boards and commissions. And also a knowing violation of this section by somebody who's a party to the contract means that the if that contract can be avoided, it's avoidable. Okay, so the fact that that wasn't disclosed could mean the contract is completely voided. Okay? Now, there's an ethics code in the charter. I included in your materials a couple of sections. Many times definitions are very important when you're talking about statutes and regulations and things because the definitions um really have so much to do with what the what the need is. So it's important that you know how things are defined. Um so I did put the definitions in. So how agency is defined, how employee is defined, financial interests are defined, immediate family, officials and so forth. All those definitions I think are important. And then the prohibited acts in section eight dash three. So these are things that aren't prohibited. This is not necessarily an exhaustive list. Again, I think you need to use a little common sense. Don't read things too closely. So following actions are deemed to constitute unfaithfulness in the duties of public office and unsuitability to the requirements of public service and shall constitute sufficient cause for action by the ethics commission. So so a town officer or employee should not represent any interests other than his own spouses or minor childrens in any manner whatsoever affecting his board, agency, department or commission. Town officer shall willfully and knowingly disclose to any other person, I'm sorry, not willfully, uh and knowingly disclose to any person any confidential information. So you may come into consumption of certain confidential information in the course of the work that you do and you need to keep that confidential. And at certain times in the proceedings, it may be important for you to keep things not to be out in the out in the community talking about things that you're that you're finding, that you're learning. And and there is other things. I'm not going to read them all, but they're all things just to be aware of that these things are prohibited acts and in your in the course of conducting yourself on the commission, that you should just be aware of these types of things. And also at number seven is that no town officer or employee shall fail to comply with section C nine dash three. That's the one I just told you about conflicts of interest that we just went over. So that is also something that the ethics commission would be concerned with. Now, if you if you violate um any of these things, then somebody can can bring a complaint before the Ethics Commission of the Town of Bethel and then would investigate and they would advise the Board of Selectmen the outcome of the determination if they find that there is any basis. When, I will tell you, when this ethics commission, I'm sorry, ethics code first came out, I was on the first commission for to implement and enforce the ethics code. And unfortunately, it was a flurry of activity. Some of you are smiling, you might remember because people that were annoyed with each other for whatever reason, they just brought a complaint from the Ethics Commission. And by that time, and it hit the newspaper at that point, I think the Bethel Beacon Kitty, did we? We had a town paper, it hit the front page and it was just, you know, and it and you're, you know, if you're a business person, you know, you live here and so forth, it's not a good thing to have a ethics complaint brought against you. So um I haven't seen that kind of activity. It seems to have gone down, but at one point it was, it was an active board. So um but anyway, be that as it may, try not to run afoul of these things. Now, what you can do sort of as a preemptive move is to ask for an advisory opinion. So if you're not really sure if you should serve on this board, you do this because you do this or whatever, whatever, you have this relationship with the parties, whatever, then you can you can just ask the Ethics Commission for a determination and say, would it be a conflict for me to do this or that? So you can sort of preempt that. I have seen that done as well.
How do you do that?
You just, you just write a letter and say I would, I'm asking for an advisory opinion and address it to the Ethics Commission. So maybe better to find out ahead of time if you have any question, right?
Can we talk about that just a little bit more, just as an example? I think there's a little bit of puzzlement. A few of us are are feeling, hmm, what does this mean and so on. And I'll use myself as an example. Um when I was hired by the town, I was involved in my husband's business. My husband was a plumber, excavating contractor, right? So here I am working in the zoning department. You may have to pull permits. Well, obviously, if he's pulling a permit for a job, I'm not going to have anything to do with it. So basically, what I did was I wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen saying that there may be times that there may be conflicts regarding my husband's business due to financial, you know, because it is a financial thing. Um and when those conflicts occur, that I would recuse myself and someone else would review the materials. And that's how I did. I did it generally.
And I think that's a really good thing to do just to flag it and to say, look, uh this is a situation and I just want you to be aware of it. And because that's exactly really what they were looking for in the conflicts um section was um was that they know. And so that they're aware.
And that I would recuse myself. That's what I did.
Member, this is, yes, well, in your case, you're.
So that's a good, that's a good idea, just if there's any question because then if people start rumbling, if there are rumblings out there in the community, you can say, I I advised, I was upfront. You know, and and also I refused myself or I didn't take part, right? So um but somebody doing business in Bethel um and has to come before the various uh departments for permits, that was going to be probably an unusual situation. So I think that's the bottom line is, you know, it with a lot of this is do the best you can to comply. If there's any question of a gray area, then I would err on the side of being conservative about it and just say, hey, this is my situation. I'm aware of, I listened when Attorney O'Brien explained the conflicts of interest clause and I'm writing this letter. Yes, okay.
I'm just thinking about the board that I sit on and sometimes we don't have a lot of advance notice about what things are coming before. Steve does an excellent job of keeping us informed, but sometimes it's, you know, you get a few days. Um so if I found out that something was going to be happening in, say, my neighborhood, I don't have a direct financial, but you know, property values and such, right? Would it be appropriate for us to draft like a blanket letter so we can just put our names in it and fill in the details and have it ready to go in those situations?
You know, I'm going to um probably let Attorney Andrews talk a little bit more about um um about ethics and serving on boards and so forth. It is sometimes is is hard because there's a lot of gray, right? We know the obvious situation, right? Um I'm a party to a contract and I'm serving on a board, you know, we know that's that's not going to fly. But the things that are are more distant, um and I think that generally I I for my own self, I say, I feel I could lose my objectivity and need to recuse myself. So I have a situation on the Board of Education where um not somebody in my immediate family member, but somebody close um was bidding for some very big school contracts, his phone was. And I just said, I'm not going to have anything to do with those decisions. I didn't say to anybody who, what, where, um and but I thought either I would try too hard to like to not to be fair and then I would I would act against or I would be, you know, whatever it was, we couldn't win. So I just said, no, I'm not in, I'm not in. And I just left myself out of those discussions completely and never voted.
So recusal, I can certainly understand. I guess I'm just a little fuzzy on when it would be appropriate to write a letter to the Ethics Commission to notify.
The financial benefit, are we talking about the conflicts of interest section?
Yeah.
Um or you could also, you could write to the Ethics Commission and ask for advisory on that. You could say, are there times when I should, under the conflict section in the charter, under the um ethics code in the charter, what would it be appropriate for me to do? Would it be appropriate for me to write a letter, you know?
Gosh, so maybe we should get a.
But I think I think that overarching um is also the objectivity that if you feel that you can't be objective, if something is going on in your neighborhood, maybe recusing, there's not a financial benefit, but if you feel your objectivity is jeopardized. I thought would be my concern. Just, you know, you really, it's very important that um I think that for the credibility of the boards and commissions and the work they do, that, you know, you're professionals and you do it to the best of your ability and you're doing people's business um with the people's records and the people's, you know, and and it's it's important that there's a trust there. And if it looks like people are doing things for their benefit, that trust gets lost. It's very hard to rebuild when that trust gets lost. So I would be I tend to be very careful um ethically. Um and I always have been as an attorney and I can sleep at night, but um there's a lot of gray. So it's hard to give you a cookie cutter answer. More that maybe you should think about any facts and circumstances and either float them by me and decide what to do or the, you know, in terms of the, you know, the the town charter provisions that we're talking about, okay? Okay, and then another thing with charter is um just a couple of other provisions in the charter that I would bring to your attention. Clearly, the um the land use commissions are relied on for a a lot of things, right? I was reading your plan and commission handout. And in terms of referrals for various things going on affecting all kinds of land, development of land, all kinds of uses, um dedication of roads and and road widening, all kinds of things, right? That you're involved with and your referrals um to um and reports issued by and referrals to your commission to look at things and referrals back to um maybe to the Board of Selectmen. Maybe like in a road, I I actually printed off a road um
Road accepted.
Yeah, all the stuff about um that there is first the plan, so the commission looks at it, it goes to public works, it goes to town engineer, it goes all over the place and everybody makes sure, because everybody has their lane. Everybody has a job to do. And if if everybody does it, if, you know, then hopefully the best result, right? Hopefully, we're all checking through different things and doing different things and we get the best result. Um so I just wanted to, so there are certain things that um so the authority to sell, purchase, demolish, real estate resides in a special town meeting after referral to planning and zoning, recommendation to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. And and I and ultimately, just my point here was ultimately, the Board of Selectmen um has has the the authority to decide whether to accept property, whether to buy, sell property and so forth. And the reason for that is that, again, everybody has a look, everybody has a look at certain things. If if the acquisition of certain property means that, you know, we're assuming an environmental liability, well, nobody wants that. I mean, it sounds like this great gift of acreage sounds like a wonderful thing, but maybe not. Um maybe it's landlocked, maybe it's inaccessible, maybe there's stuff going on that would require an ongoing maintenance obligation on the part of the town or liability on the part of the town. So, you know, again, everybody has their their job and the things that they do and we all work together, but we don't want to overstep either. We want to stay in in the lane, do what we're supposed to do absolutely, but also acknowledge that other parties do things as well and have responsibility as well. John, I want to talk a bit about um Roberts Rules of Order. So why is it necessary to have Roberts Rules or any rules of order? Um and what does that help achieve? Well, again, remembering that freedom of information means that open meetings, access to public information. Now you're in a setting in a meeting and you just can't have things to walk the roots, right? You just can't have everybody spotting at one time and you're not listening to me and I'm not listening to you and it's just a bad scene. There's no civility, you know, and and there are times when meetings get contentious or these these applications you're reviewing matter to people and they matter to their neighbors and they matter to this person and that person. And so it's lots of times people are charged up and they're they're, you know, but you have to maintain control, but the chairs have to maintain control and the other members have to respect the chair. So when the chair says, Mr. Jones, you're leading, you know, back to the topic at hand, back to the agenda, Mr. Jones has to say, absolutely, I forgot myself, right? So you just, you're going to be, you're professional. And and also remember that it's not only what you're saying, it's also your body language. So when you're rolling your eyes or, you know, you're you know, you're shaking your head or things like that, you know, you're you're not looking like an effective person, right? You're, you want to be listening, you want to be effective, you want to be just as, you know, really tuned in, but no preconceived notions, right? You come in, you listen to all the information, you gather all the information. If you have questions and you're not ready to make a decision, you say, we need more of this, that or the other thing from somebody. We need an engineer to look at this, we need some specialists, we just don't know. That's fine, but just get what you need to feel comfortable about making a decision. But it's really important for everyone to believe that you are um, you know, objective and you're weighing the facts and the law and, you know, that that that's the treatment they're going to get just like you would want if this were your application, I mean, for the board, right? No?
I just about in talking about the rules and the chair is running the meeting and so on and so forth. And this has always bothered me because I don't know the answer. And it just has recently happened to the Planning and Zoning Commission. When they, when you're running a meeting and you're having a public hearing and there are formats, most of these boards do, and someone from the general public says, point of order. What does that mean?
It means they're not happy with something that's going on in the meeting.
Okay, so they have the right to interrupt a meeting and say, point of order.
I believe so.
I.
What do you say?
I I they're not a member of the commission. Maybe a commission member can do it. I wouldn't say the public. The public doesn't have the right to speak only in certain circumstances.
You know what? I'm thinking, I think we, Richard thinks like at the town budget meeting, I've heard people do that.
Yes, but they've done it at P M.
And they've actually spoken out and they've spoken out. And and it it's, sometimes it's 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 actually appropriate, the things that they're saying. So maybe there's more latitude there. Um but I think normally, I think I agree, having reviewed Roberts Rules, it's normally something that, you know, somebody, a commission member would say, right?
But I think we need to get, we need to understand it better.
But why don't we look into that for you?
Because.
Raise that.
It's a matter of it's a public hearing versus a.
It could be, it could be a regular meeting. It could be in a public hearing format. It could be in a regular meeting format, but I can think of many instances. I've I've heard of many instances where someone.
Well, during public comment, you've opened the floor to public.
But that's different. This is point of order.
Anytime in the meeting.
In a contentious.
Right.
Were you there when this was going on?
No, but I questioned the standing of a member of the public to raise any procedural questions when it's only the commission. That's that, I mean, that would be my reaction to that.
Does everybody understand that? And some members know where I'm where I'm talking about.
This must go back though, right, to early Connecticut town meeting law or so there must be an answer for it. They probably.
Sure, if it's a town meeting, the town meeting is part of the people who can vote and part of the body that is doing it. But for a planning zoning commission, no.
Not a town.
Correct. It's just the commission. It's, that'd be my distinction.
So remember that answer.
Public meeting and a town meeting, well.
This is not a town meeting. This is a planning and zoning commission.
Right.
Your point of order could be rec, would be recognized in a town meeting format. This is not that format.
So at that point, it'd be like the the chair to say your point of order is is not recognized and the floor is not open to public comment at this point.
Sure. I mean, you don't have to recognize any member of the public speaking, particularly if it's not during a, if it's during a public hearing, say whatever they want.
During the public, yeah.
Talking about here, right? If it's, if it is that kind of, depending on where, what it, what is, what's booked. Right, public hearing, I think that I would distinguish that because that's what people are there.
Oh, absolutely.
They should be, you know, waiting to be recognized, but.
And we would correct, and the chairman would correct them and say, excuse me, I recognize this person. And then when they're done, I will recognize you. That's very easy to do it. But when it comes out of nowhere.
Just be disruptive.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Well, while somebody else is speaking, just be disruptive and yell that out.
Can't drag them out if they do that? That's probably a whole nother thing.
I think there is a distinction then, right?
Yeah, there is.
Meeting, it really isn't a meeting. We've got to be careful what we call things where uh where it's more um public participation, like the situation.
That and we do it.
Yep, or or just your regular meeting when you're talking about this.
Dave have any idea maybe because he's pretty good with his Roberts Rules, what else?
But I I got the, I think I have the answer that you all were needing to, because it was always, it was just what is this? What, you know, point of order and everybody stops. And it's like, okay, now what do we do? No, no, no.
Can't you just say, help, please hold your comments until the public.
And that's what will happen.
Till it's your turn.
No one knew the answer. Now we have an idea politely.
Of course. Meeting versus during versus town meeting.
Exactly, yeah.
Everyone's. They presumably have standing to raise whatever they want.
Right.
Planning zoning commissions or land use is just the commission. There may be points where we allow public comment. But absent that.
Yeah.
They can't, I mean, and.
Point of order is from your board, within the board, not from the public. I think that's the best way to.
Yeah, we, I I I had. Yeah, we, I I I had um board members when people were digressing and going field saying, point of order. Right, get back up, get back on track.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so some things about Roberts Rules then, it's so really important to have some rules of order. Members are equal, right? And you don't have any, that doesn't have any greater right, well, assuming.
I have no rights.
She's got no right.
No rights.
Assuming she was a board member, no greater rights than anybody else. Everybody has the right to be heard, right? And should be given their time, but um it has to be done in an orderly way. So you just can't have people just talking and somebody else jumping and somebody else, really, somebody should have the floor. And the chair should recognize, Mr. Jones, yes, so you have your hand up or however, you know, just keep looking. That chair needs to be looking around and and saying, are there any questions and checking and checking, uh, so that, you know, everybody does have an opportunity. Your head's sort of on a swivel, I know I did a lot of that. So to make sure everybody has an opportunity to talk, right? So uh, and of course, we can conduct business, right? You have to have a forum, you have to have enough people at a meeting. Uh, and members need to be prepared, right? It's it's disconcerting to somebody who has a matter before you and people come in and. What's happening tonight? What are we doing? What are we doing? You know, so really preparation is important, that you know that you've looked at the materials and you know what's going on. A chairperson needs to start on time, but not before time, because if you have a meeting closed in for seven P M, don't start at ten or seven. You've told the public, you're starting a meeting at seven, right? So start the meeting at seven. Agenda items, um, I think it's it's good practice to introduce an agenda item if it needs any interruption. Oh, this is the matter we talked about, two meetings about who was tabled, whatever, it might be necessary to do that. And motions, sometimes a motion's made in seconds, it takes a long conversation and back and forth, back and forth. And you may have to come back and restate the motion, because people might have forgotten what you were talking about. So just be clear, because you just want everybody to be clear what you're voting on. Now, now the motion on the table was, should we approve this with that? Or whatever, so the people know, right? Um, so just clarity is important, that that, you know, the meeting is well-run and people know what's going on, what they're voting for. And anybody watching via Zoom or in the room feels like, you know, they know that you know what's going on. Yes, they knew, they understood that motion and they discussed it and they circled back and they approved that motion, restated that motion. Um, so the chairperson, how many chairpeople do we have? Needs to keep order, stay calm and objective, so stay calm and all the craziness, board chair has to stay calm. And also just directing members back to the agenda, so sometimes, you know, people digress and you just have to bring them back. And that's not on the agenda, because again, you're really always with discussing what's on the agenda. You're not going on to what's happening next week or what happened last month, you know, you really try to stay focused on what's on the agenda. And just be accurate in in your motions and so forth. I tried to bet members keeping in their lane, focused on the business at hand, they found some questions necessary for the decision-making that's in front of you. Being impartial in your actions and behavior, not just the way, things that you speak, but the way you you act. Yeah, even if I have to, I'm gonna defer to a co-Neanderthal to discover, discuss recusing oneself and objectivity and so forth. There was a question that definitely given me um, that concerning a recess. And Roberts Rules saying that recess is a privileged motion, it's because it's for the benefit of the group. And you should make a motion and state the purpose and duration of the recess, so you know that some of your meetings go quite late. And you might need to take a break, let everybody stretch their legs, use a restroom, just say, I can make a motion for a fifteen minute recess. So everybody can, you know, stretch their legs and use the restroom, whatever, and to be back here in, you know, fifteen minutes. So the purpose of the recess and that you're expected to be back. And just a few things on on freedom of information, we've been talking about a little bit, that um, the access to public information. And the um, open meetings and all those things. So um, F O I is a, is an act, Freedom of Information Act, that basically sets requirements for meetings and records. Um, obviously, meetings are open to the public, so you want to be sure, simple little things like doors are not locked. Because sometimes they lock the back door, that used to be my problem on occasion.
They won't get on me.
Yeah, so you have to be careful, you know, people need to be able to get to. It could be a problem, so um, you know, we put a sign on the door, if this door is locked, please call so-and-so. And if somebody's cell phone who could run down and open the door if that was necessary, so you really need to have access. To uh, to the meeting. And meetings are open in public unless an executive session, so there are very limited circumstances of an executive session. Um, so um, that would be maybe pending litigation, some sensitive personnel matters. You know, disclosing something like the security plan for the school buildings or something, I don't think you have to do that. I certainly would argue that you don't have to do that. Uh, and a two-third vote is required to go into executive session. Advance notice, of course, unless an emergency meeting. And just general things, um, and right through the meeting, uh, you can add items to the agenda with a two-thirds vote, but not at a special meeting. That's right, shouldn't be changing, adding items to the agenda at a, at a special meeting. So it's, if, when you think about this, meeting notice, agendas and minutes afterward, that's informing the public of what you're going to do. What business you're conducting, and then what happened when you, when you had that business, when you conducted that business. So really important, when you think of freedom of information, people have access to that information. So it has to be, um, meetings need to be posted ahead of time in the agendas and minutes have to be available on a certain period of time. And then also, an agency needs to provide some components to information that's requested to have. So now somebody wants something from the records, some some other information. And then all likely, because they're going to be able to get it, unless there's an exception to providing that information. And those are narrow. Very narrow exceptions, generally, you have to disclose information that you have. Uh, the chairperson is the spokesman for the commission. Is generally the spokesperson. And the reason for that is, there should be really one person, one point of contact who really knows what's going on. So if a comment is asked, that's the person who should be speaking. Um, here's some F O I red flags, illegal or unnoticed meetings. So um, you need to notice your meetings, as we just said, and have agendas and minutes and so forth. If you don't, then that's gonna be a problem for you. Um, you should conduct your meetings and then when you, when you leave the meeting, just don't keep talking about. You know, what you had in the meeting, you've adjourned your meeting, you can't walk out as a group, certainly not as a majority of you. And still be talking about it, because you're actually still continuing meeting. So you have to just be careful about that, that, that. Um, so also, so pre-meetings are not a good idea, after meetings and recess meetings are not a good idea. So you should not be conducting business of a meeting when you're not really officially on record with a posted meeting in an agenda. And reply all to emails can be problematic. So you can actually be considered to be conducting a meeting, because somebody says, oh, here's some information we got on such and such. Oh, I think this about that, and I think this, and why don't we do this? And you know, so that can actually get into looking like maybe some business is being conducted, back and forth with meetings, so gotta be careful about that. I've known some problems in some Bethel boards with this next issue, and it's cell phones and texting during meetings. Especially when it appears that you're texting another member of the commission or somebody in the audience. Um, really shouldn't be doing that, again, everything is supposed to be out in the open. Um, so what what is happening is supposed to be recorded, and people should have access to that. And it just begins to look, you know, like you're hiding things, there's other things going on.
Most of us are of the age that we can't listen and partake in a meeting and text at the same time.
Some people may try, so just.
The majority of us don't know how to do it, so that is a concern, it's just the younger.
And and really, unless you're using your phone as your device to look at the, at the meeting, you're gonna try to have a really hard time on my phone doing that. You probably should just turn your phones off and just put them aside, so they're not.
We do.
I have to have my phone at the meeting, because my husband is on the sitter.
Okay, okay.
So I leave mine on, but I never turn it on, I mean, I never pick it up.
Okay.
And but we do make a statement at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
There's a policy saying that we do, um, we are using our electronic devices to review um, uh, materials that are in the file. Obviously, because we have one screen.
Right.
And if we're sitting down there, you can't see the screen very well, so we have, you know, but we, they make a blanket statement. Saying that that's the only reason they're using their electronic devices.
Okay, and and clearly, if you're using to access meeting materials, that's one thing, right?
Right.
And that's sort of like an honor code type of thing, because.
Right.
Nobody's actually able to monitor, right? But you should just know for yourselves, that even if it doesn't actually constitute an F O I violation. If if it, if the perception is that it could, it could get, you could have a complaint brought against you. So to the extent that you can avoid that, and you know, if you get a personal call, you have to take, just get up and leave the room. You're adults, just get up and leave the room, I have something I have to do, I've had to do that certainly, if I had to do that in in my meeting.
So how about, you talk about freedom of information, so let's say somebody wants to talk for that, you know, is there a charge for that?
Yes.
And then, then the other thing is, can they take a photo of it with their camera?
Yes.
So then there'd be no charge.
In the office, you mean?
Yeah, they can, if people can come in and review in the office and no cost, there's no cost incurred. But sometimes you might get a rather broad request for lots of documents spanning a great deal of, you know, of paper. And um, so that would be a different situation, somebody actually has to obtain that photo files, obtain a copy and so forth. And there's, can be costs associated.
No, I I get that, I just, myself, I just wondered about your feedback, because it's the same, same type of thing even, to put it in the format that somebody might use. Because we had that, we had that, remember, they had that person, it couldn't happen, and we had to put it on, you know, uh. Excel, like the spreadsheet and. You know, so he could meet it, you know, it was, it was kind of a accessibility.
Yes. Yes.
Melanie, I have a question about um, the minutes. As a, as a public person before being on the board, um, if you read the minutes, you don't get what actually people said at the meeting or anything else. So what, what level of detail is needed in the minutes for the public? Because if it just says, uh, discussion ensued, well.
Right, and many times that it does, you, most meetings historically were recorded. And now many times they're actually filmed, they're live streamed, and then the, then the meeting is available to the public to actually hear what was said by whom and so forth. So it's, you're right, the minutes are not that detailed. So to really know what was said, you probably have to review the meetings.
And the statutes, I, from what I understand, but I believe in the statutes, it says, motions have to be.
My understanding, you need the, you know, time starting and people present, the motions, the actual votes.
And that's.
It's very, very bare bones.
It is bare bones, yeah.
And then the people who stood up to speak.
Yes.
Right, what they said.
But evidently, in going to the workshop for newly elected, it said that they were saying there that they didn't absolutely have to give their address.
That's true.
So.
That's true, right?
No, no.
That's our understanding.
But I, I guess.
At least for F O I, they don't have to, to get an F O I request, and I don't.
I don't know.
I believe we were told, I I believe that I saw a seminar that said the same, that they did not have to say what they were, to be able to participate.
In what?
In.
A public hearing?
No, to, well, it was really to get information, that to do an F O I request, but you don't necessarily have to. I mean, if you want it sent to you.
Right, right.
Understanding.
My, my understanding, there's, you can't be required to sign in to attend a meeting.
Right.
The, the, you know, that, that is, but in terms of a request, you know, um, do you have to identify who it is? I, I don't know, I mean, lawyers do all the time, they don't say what client is.
Right.
Request, though, this is, you know, someone standing up during a public hearing.
Oh.
We always say our address. In the minutes, but what I understood from this workshop was that you didn't have to require that, the address.
In the minutes.
Is that of the, in the minutes or even.
I don't know what the answer to that question is, but we've been do, you know, all I can say is for the last thirty-five years, that's how we've done it, is name and address.
I thi- I think it's fine to ask for it, if they don't give it, they don't want it.
Yeah, we ask for it also.
We never held it against them.
Not, not give it.
And and just to clarify, as far as the minutes, um, the motions and and things like that, um, to do. Uh, it's always been my, my opinion that, um, you can't, you can't paraphrase what someone is saying. Unless you have a legal stenographer present, doing a verbatim transcript of what actually is going on. You're asking for more trouble if you paraphrase as the sec, as the recording secretary, than just keeping to the bare bones of the actions that took place in the meeting. Okay, and for those of you online, I'll up, we'll upload everything to you this, uh, tomorrow, so you'll have a copy of the materials that are used tonight. Thank you, Melanie, very much.
You just said you don't have to be required to sign in to a public meeting? No, I don't think.
The public.
I don't think any of these boards, all I recall, ever have done so. I've been to town meetings where, before you go in, you have to sign your name to go in.
But the reason for that is a different, that's a different um, reason, that you have to sign in so the registrar voters can verify that you're either a voter or the town of Bethel. Or if it's for funding purposes, it would be to say that you are the tax rolls.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I'm gonna be covering a lot of the same ground that Melanie was covering, but basically, she was going over the charter and the ethics code. And there's other sources of authority, which are the statutes, the land use statutes themselves and with, and the judge's law. It's called common law, they make it up, and then it's. Did you know like courts, for example, if you, you know, want to sue somebody, you fall down and you want to sue them, you 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 don't cite statutes, you don't, you you say, no, it it's the law. You have, must use reasonable care, negligence, it is, it is not, and you can't find any law book that has that. It's all in the opinions, it's, it's, so there is a body of law, believe it or not, that are made up by judges, um, you know. And uh, and there's a, a small portion which affects land use stuff too. So um, what I'm, uh, so what I, I'm gonna cover some of the same subjects. The first is the conflict of interest, and again, Melanie was talking about this, what the charter says, is what the ethics statute said. And again, there's also these other statutes. Basically, what it says, the statutes say, is there's three things that you, you, you can't do, well, in in the statutes. First, you can't represent anyone else before your commission or another land use commission. Other words, you may be, what if you have uh, some expertise, you are, you know, a surveyor, an architect or something. And they say, hey, you're on the commission, help me go to wetlands, I'm on zoning commission, go before wetlands or the C B A to get my variance. You know, can I represent you? The answer is no, you can't. You, you, you can't, so there's a whole prohibition on representation of anyone besides yourself, by the way. You could still, I mean, I can't find my own application before, you know, whatever, want a variance, you know, and I need to put the deck in, my wife's gonna kill me. So you, you, you gotta, you, you can do that, but you can't represent somebody else uh, before another board, so that's one thing. And then the other thing is the disqualification, if you have, and the distinction is personal and financial interests. That, that's, that's the term that they use in in the statutes. And the personal one is obviously if there's an application by your, uh, your spouse or a close relative, obviously, you wouldn't want to do that. Friendships, you have a close friend or something, you shouldn't be voting on something that your friend has, you know, presented there. It could be social or business relationships as well, or your employer's relations, you know, a relationship with your employer. An interesting one, I think you mentioned, is the, what I call the proximity cases. What if somebody is, you know, the applicant is close to you, uh, you know, the, the application is the next block over. Um, where, where do you draw the line there as to when you should recuse yourselves? And the, the case law, believe it or not, is uh, there, there's no bright line. There's been a few cases where somebody, you know, the neighboring property or a hundred feet away, and the court said, yes, you should have, I'm throwing out your decision. Because you should have recused yourself. And there's other ones where. And the court said, yes, you should have, I'm throwing out your decision because you should have recused yourself. And there's other ones where it's, uh, close as well.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet.
Two hundred forty-five feet.
And it's okay. Now, you haven't proved your case. So I can't, there's, there's no real bright line there, but it's an issue. It's a, it could be a potential concern. Can't give you a definite thing, but that is an a- category of thing, again, of, of where you may want to recuse yourself. Um, I think the, uh, so, so that's on the, almost coming to the personal interest sort of things. Where, where you're affected a little differently than others and you may have a personal interest. The other one is called, is they say the financial interest. And that is a little more clear cut. Obviously, i- if, um, the example, there was a case where somebody was on the planning commission, approved a subdivision. And it was contractor and later, you know, made a, a, a bid for the road contract, you know, and got it. And, and they, and, and the court said, and he said, well, I, I didn't even know about, you know, I didn't even know if I was going to bid for it or whatever. And they said, nope. That's, that, that looks terrible, basically. It has a real appearance of impropriety. And that, in that area where there's a, I, I think the courts, in my opinion, if there's a financial element to it, it's an easier call for them. So you just say, oh, you're going to benefit financially more than the average person than you should have recused yourself. Then, then, then the standard they cite is more rigorous, I think. Sometimes they say, oh, if it's even an appearance of impropriety, they don't say that all the time. Because they always, they, they have these statements in the cases where they say, hey, look at, um, yeah, you got to recuse yourself, but if you do, you, if it's every little thing, we wouldn't have any boards, you know. So, so they, you know, they, they kind of go back and forth. They want to balance it. But on the financial side, I think they, they tend to, uh, stricter. Another example of a financial interest is if you have a competitor. If you're in a particular business, your competitor wants to show up and do something in there, and, uh, courts have said, nope. They, they've been pretty clear, you know, other side of town, forget it, you should have recused yourself. Um, there was one where it was a, there was a gun club that was an application for a gun club. And there was a member who was, uh, a gun shop, the only gun shop in town that sold shells or whatever. And, uh, they voted on the application and he said, you should have recused yourself because you could have potentially financially benefited from that. So that's, you know, the general question is, i- does, does this decision, does this application, the approval or denial, does it affect you, your family, your employer, your clients in a way not shared by the majority? Because, uh, I, there, there've been a number of cases, you know, what I put in the public interest category. Well, what about, um, you know, a, a, a land trust or, or, or the town has, wants to do a playground. You've got kids, you know, you would benefit. Would you have to recuse yourself? And, and the answer is generally no for those things, you know, you're not the only one with kids, uh, yeah. And, and it's, it, that, that is, that there, there's a lot of freedom on those. So those are the general categories, personal, financial, no representational, personal and financial, those are the ones that are, yes, yes.
Um, I'm just, my mind keeps going through land use commissions and like, uh, so like if you're on a different board, a commission has to do with land oppositions, perhaps you're open, please. And you share seats on boards and it's on your land because you're not, not going to gain anything financially. It's could be public, open space for the town or whoever, right? Sure, is that?
Sure, sure. So you could be on open space commission and they recommend doing it. And then, and then there's a subdivision they want to do or, or something. So it could be, because you're also on planning zoning or something, you'd be on another board. The other board has already voted for it, whatever. Have you made up your mind in advance or you're prejudiced because you voted for it? And, and, and something like that. Those cases, I've seen a few cases like that and typically you don't win. I, I mean, that when someone who makes those arguments typically, I put that more in the public interest category. That's sort of how I, I view it. Um, I, I, I know it has a little bit of the sniff test. Wait a minute, you know, haven't you made up your mind? You, you know, in another capacity. But I, I don't think it, um, I haven't seen that be successful much, um, in that type of category.
What, being litigated against?
Yeah. In other, other words, someone's, you know, looking for something to toss out a case and, and that, that claim has been raised a couple of times. I think it's, there's been a couple of cases where, you know, what about someone on a land trust? And what, you know, our, our land trust is on Yeah, yeah, private land trust, but they own land. That, I think there's been a couple of cases where, you know, they're, they're on a land trust, land trust owns land adjacent to the area of development. Do they have to recuse themselves? And I think the answer has been, they didn't have to.
Did not.
Yeah, uh, you know.
If you're what constitutes being on the land trust, you're serving on the board or you, you get emails from them, do you get?
Yeah. I, I, I mean, I
You get more involved with the land trust.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think a member, I think the cases where you're just a member of the land trust, but, but, but I, you know, I, I can imagine there may be some close calls there that you may want to look at. I mean, that, that's sort of the bottom line too. I hadn't even thought of the advisory opinion business. That's, you know, that, that may work. Or you, you can
I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I've never heard of that. So.
Um, so if you recuse yourself, you still could participate as a public.
That
Cause that's come up a lot of times.
Yes, that, that, that is, um, sticky. And, and I can tell you examples where, sort of, first of all, if you're the applicant, which you can do.
Right.
And you recuse yourself, I think you can participate, you know, and someone may say, you know, it's probably better if you have a representative so you don't do anything, someone else presents it. But I think that most cases are okay. Um, and, and there have been a number of cases where you, someone has recused and even spoken in opposition, that's been okay. And there's been other cases where it hasn't, hasn't worked. The case that came up a, a number of days ago was someone on a historical commission who, uh, this was in Litchfield, where there was a, a heavily contested, um, uh, application for that, that, uh, on the historic district to, to do something to a property. And one member who had provided, who had some expertise in it, recused himself and then went and spoke in opposition. And the, and, and there was, were some cases that say, well, you know, that's not a personal, they, they didn't, you know, he had no personal interest. He wasn't benefiting personally. Wasn't financially, didn't get anything out of it. So doesn't check those boxes. But here's what it did violate. Remember I mentioned that judges make up their law? There's something called fundamental fairness. That, that, that says, well, ha, ha, it did, you know, and because there's precedent, they said, well, it doesn't, it's not personal financial interest. I can do that. And they said, no, it's a violation of fundamental fairness because you got, you're sitting up here with this guy and this guy who's, you know, has some credibility with you guys gets around and turns and says, I think this is violating of this. And, and the same guy who you're going to have to be sitting with the next time, if you say no to him, it's, it's just not going to work. So you can't do that. So there, that, that was that case. So that, that's why I said it's a little tenduus. I, I think in some cases perhaps, but, um, I'm, I'm, I would be careful of that, of recusing yourself and speaking in opposition. Particularly, it's going to be appeal. That's what we call me in. That's only, you know, you, you guys do a lot of stuff all the time. I don't see ninety percent of it, good thing. But, you know, the stuff that I come in, when people with goats and ties are looking like me show up, that's, then you, then you gotta watch out. And then you, then you really gotta, I think, do everything by the book. Absolutely. Even if you can tweak things a little bit here and there, because who cares? There's not going to be an appeal. But, but those are the ones I, I think, don't, don't risk. So. Thank you. Um, so that, that was, um, the, the personal, the conflict of interest and the statutes and then fundamental fairness. There's some other things that come in other ways that you should recuse yourself. It's, well, there's one thing called predetermination. And that, that, that's again, a common law thing. It's not necessarily in the statutes, but it's, it's, that's in the case law sense. Is, and that's if, if a commission member has made up its, is, is her mind in advance without listening to the evidence of the public hearing that they're going to vote a certain way, then they're not open and they should recuse themselves. That's a pretty tough burden, but some people have done that. And particularly if you're in an elected position, you guys, you know, you get elected, you know, you may be tempted, yes, I'm going to stand for this. I'm going to say this. Whatever, you, you know, if, if you're actually, you know, quoted and make things, I'm against this thing, then you may mean if you, you say, you know, you're not, you're not saying, I want to look at this carefully, whatever you're going to say, this is against, it's bad for our town, then you probably need to recuse yourself if that thing comes up again. And that, so that is out there, this predetermination issue. So be conscious of that when you make public statements.
Especially during a public hearing.
Yeah. I mean, you shouldn't do it, do it during a public hearing. I- i- if you have an opinion, wait till the end to say, I want to, you know, I want to listen to everything. And you can ask questions, but don't make a statement like you prejudge it when there's still evidence going on. That, that, that is, uh, not a good idea. Someone's going to claim predetermination.
Is that by justice for that case or could they start to claim predetermination for another, uh, future applications?
It would be just for that case, but maybe they claim it and, and, and if they did it for another case, they'd have to prove it for that other case. What, what, you know, it's, it's specific to the particular case. You predetermined this outcome for this thing, doesn't mean other things you have.
If they go back and look at like something, things that were said to us, like another specific, you know, land use attorney or project engineer or something like that in previous applications and then ever bring it.
Well, I mean, the problem is
Predetermination or bias.
They, they, I mean, they probably can't challenge it if, if the, if the appeal period is wrong. Remember you got the, it's, you know, for something in the past, you say, ah, ah, well, you should have, you know, for that thing we did six months ago, you should have recused yourself. So I'm going to bring a lawsuit and do it. No, you can't because assuming you did it right, they only had, they have fifteen days after the notice is published and, you know, you're, you're done. And so, so, I mean, I don't, I don't see that happening. That's likely not happening. Um, the, the, the other category that's, it's, it's kind of, I mentioned this third fundamental fairness element comes in and it's sort of the judgment thing. Other areas that where cases have been thrown out, where there was one where someone made a, an ethnic remark as a joke. It was the applicant himself said, oh, you know, we like a garden, you know, we Italians like a garden. And, and then the commission member, you know, you know, opted. And then, and, uh, oh, yeah. And, and even though the applicant had started the, the dialogue, you know, it, it just didn't look good. And then the commission said, oh, no, this, this is not the, you know, this is an impartiality. You can't do that. So just be sensitive to that. You probably won't do it, but, you know, just showing you, it's an example of, don't go there. Right? You know, because it's, the cases have been lost that way. Uh, treatment of the applicant. This was in, you know, I had an example of a recent case. This is out of Westport. From nineteen, uh, from less than a year ago, up in the Pel Court. This was somebody who was an applicant. I don't even know what they was, a P and Z application, special exception, I think it was an excavation and filth requirement. And the, went, they, they filed the application. Staff said, um, the application's incomplete. Give us an extension. You know, and then, you know, at the next public hearing, you know, we'll, we'll continue it and, and then give us the initial mission. We'll start the public hearing. And the advocate said, no, I think it is complete. Uh, you know, I disagree with you. So the, and then they had the public hearing and, um, the, 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 you, you understand this, the, the commission was protecting their staff. And they're saying, look at this guy's being miserable and they're jerks to our staff, whatever. We're just going to deny this without prejudice. And that's what they did. And, and believe the trial court said that was fine. Uh, the Pel Court reversed and basically for two reasons. Uh, the, the, one reason is that it was public hearing and you didn't let him speak. They sort of just denied it without prejudice. Uh, and, you know, they have a right to, you know, he, he claimed it was complete. And you didn't get him a chance to even do that. So you need to do that. You're not being impartial. And then as a result of certain comments that they said as well, the commission footnotes said, you should, people who should probably recuse themselves. And here's what they were saying. Uh, the commission members justified the closing of the hearing by stating that the plaintiff, quote, stomped on the staff, quote, gave the staff holy hell, quote, was egregious. Quote, was confrontational. And that, quote, on the day of the application, the applicant threw a bunch of crap at blank, and that was crap. Furthermore, the members commented on the plaintiff's previous application stating clearly that they were a, quote, shit show and, quote, horrible. So, um,
So that happened outside of the public hearing is what you're saying.
I, this, this happened on the record because they're quoting against.
Right. But, but I'm trying to understand the, so you had commission members who talked to staff and heard that this guy was treating staff, you know, horribly.
Right.
And, but it wasn't brought out at the public hearing is what I'm saying. They all just knew it because they talked to staff.
Yeah, they, they closed the public hearing and then they sent all this stuff on the record.
They said all this stuff when it wasn't said in the public to begin with.
Yeah. And I, and here's what the, here's what the court said in their footnote when they were saying this is bad stuff. They said, fundamental fairness, remember that's the thing, new concept. Fundamental fairness requires that both that a full and fair opportunity to be heard is provided and that commission members are neutral and impartial when deciding whether to approve zoning applications. And that gives case site, based on certain members' intemperate remarks that suggest an absence of neutrality or impartiality toward the plaintiff in his application on remand and upon appropriate motions, some members of the commission should consider recusing themselves. So there's, in a footnote, the court saying, don't do that, guys. And you should get off on the, when it comes before you. So that's just, just a, a, a lesson. You, you don't want to give ammunition to whatever side by saying, you know, comments like that, even, you know, even so far as you're tempted, and even if the public applauds you, if they do. Because court, the judge isn't going to be looking at the applause. Um, sure.
We had a really nitpicky thing come up at our last session. I was informed that you might be able to clarify. What, what is the difference between denying something with prejudice and without prejudice?
Technically, there's very little difference. They're both denials. But usually what without prejudice means is that it can be fixed. It can be fixed if you tweak something that you can, you can do something a little bit different, you know, we, we can, and resubmit it as opposed to if you resubmit, we're just going to deny it really. But if you tweak some things, that, that's typically what it's, what a common parlor says, has meant.
So in your example that you were just using, if we remove all of the nasty conversations that were inappropriate and happened, if it was an incomplete application, it could have just been denied without prejudice. He could have, he or she could have supplied the requested documents and reapplied?
Well, they would have, they, they did two things wrong. One, they made the intemperate comments, but the second is they didn't let him speak.
Yeah, so.
So, so
Provided that he spoke and it's
He only wrote a quote.
Right.
And it would have created a record. Is he right? Maybe he's right.
Yeah.
You know, like staff, maybe they're wrong. So, so, and then you would have had a record, you would have made a decision, I think he's right, and I, or I think staff's right. They'll make a decision, the judge would review the decision. But right now they were saying, look, we, we don't even know, you didn't give them a chance to, to present his case. So we have a good record for that. So, so that, I mean, that was
Okay. And I, and I hate to know this, but for a better even understanding of that, when they, when a commission accepts an application at the time of acceptance, they don't have to accept it, right? They could say, no, the application is complete and not even go through that whole application process and public hearing? Or is this court case saying now?
You need to accept anything. I, 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 you can deny it for incomplete, but the risk is, if, I, I mean, you've heard the, the saying, write it on the back of a napkin and that's my application. The danger is that if you don't act within a certain, for certain applications, psych plans, you don't act within sixty-five days, it's automatically approved. So it's always better to accept and, and deny it for incompleteness and going through whatever due process they're entitled to. So, so, yeah, I don't, I don't think it starts to run, the, the, you know, sixty-five days starts to run the day or the day, you know, how the sixty-five days calculated. But I don't think, I, I'm concerned that, uh, if, if you say, we, we, we're not, we're not going to act on this application because we deem it incomplete. It's not a complete application, so we're just not going to act on it. That runs the danger of an automatic approval for failure to act.
Okay, but I, I'm not saying act on the application. I'm saying deny the application. This is not complete.
Correct.
You need this following information. They give you an app game and we're saying, no, that's, the commission is saying that's not
Yeah, yeah. That's the way to handle that. That's
And that's the way we do it.
Right, yeah.
That's okay.
Doing it right, yeah, absolutely. That's the way to do it.
So let me, let me see that in my understanding. Because when you, like, when you say, okay, so you're going to deny it and you're, you're saying that the application is not complete. You have to give them a list of saying, okay, here's what you need to have.
I usually do.
I, I don't think you have to, but you want it in the record in the event there's an appeal that so that we can, you know, the attorney can defend it and say, here's how it is incomplete. But I, I, you know, hopefully that's stuck in there.
The big guessing game. You know, like the next time he comes, you say, well, it's still not complete.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I think it's a best practice to say, this is what we need. You left out, you didn't, you know, you're
And like, let's say you were, like, just the meeting you were talking about. So then if you said, Mr. So-and-so, uh, just hold on for a second and let's ask Beth what, Beth, what's lacking in the application?
I would tell you what's lacking in the application.
And you could say, okay, as soon as you get these things, we would be more than willing to accept it.
Yeah. And sometimes you waive the application. I mean, typically if it's without prejudice, you, you waive the application. I, I've seen it. So, so you, so that's another way of saying, we're not, you know, we're
Reapplication.
We're, we're saving, yeah. That, yeah, the second, you know, we'll waive the application fees and, and that shows that you're good faith and, you know, and you're being generous.
Or you deny without prejudice, then you do waive the fees. But if you deny with prejudice, then they have to pay more.
Yeah, i- if they, presumably if you deny it, they can always deny, they, certain things, there's, you can't submit the same application in a certain timeframe for certain types of applications. It could be, you know, not all applications, but some of the statutes actually say that you can't submit substantially the same. But typically, you But typically, you can deny anything and they can make a change, say, oh, that's, that's a difference, and they file another application. But what, without prejudice means to be that this is a fixable type of thing that you do certain things.
So with, with prejudice is basically just a way of noting. That you're displeased.
You don't deny with prejudice.
Yeah, you don't usually.
You just deny.
Yeah, you just deny. And then you say without prejudice to get the signal.
Because they can always just reapply anyway, so you're not, you sound like you're a problem if you're gonna deny with prejudice.
Yeah, I would not say with prejudice, I'd just say.
I'm just trying to identify because I'm talking about it.
No, no. No, that, that, that's correct. You won't, it just, it just call a straight denial.
Point that without prejudice means that they get to reapply when.
It's an invitation to come back.
Please.
That's what it is. When you say deny without prejudice, it means. Come back, let's see if we can work on this a little bit more. Final denial.
Yeah, denial, and they may, they may not be able to reapply with the same thing. You know, they'd have to do some substantial changes.
But that would be a decision that was made whether they can apply or not by the initial consultation with, say, the agent, the, the town employee.
Then, yeah, wh- whether they're precluded from filing the same application, there are some statutes that specifically state. I don't remember what they specifically are, but it says, within a year, you can't do the same.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yeah, I think it is a CBA thing, and there's some common, there's some case law about that too, that you can't re, just do the same thing. So, not, not anybody. I don't, I don't know, I, you know, with any sophistication, it can change something. You know, I, I think, I, I would be really optimistic if they just submitted the same thing. And the argument would be whether it's a significant change.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, just continuing on, the other thing you need to do, I think, is, is that you need to either attend all the public hearings. If you're voting on the application, you need to attend, or watch, you know, watch the video is, is the, you know, before you can vote. I think that covers that. Another category.
You have to say that you've reviewed all the material.
You should.
It's helpful for the record, right? I think they have the burden to show you haven't, but it's always good. You don't invite it. And typically, if you've missed a hearing, that someone will ask you, okay, you missed so-and-so, did you?
Dave usually calls that out.
Right, yeah. So, so Dave will ask, you know, have you in fact, you know?
Or in fact, what happens is a lot of times, when, when we do, we start the business meeting, the, uh, one of us will say, well, we listened to the, to the tape.
They'll say, for the record, I listened to the video of the previous meeting.
And so it's on the record there.
A- another thing in this area, it's not quite the same as conflict of interest, but it's ex parte communications. Um, the, the general theory is that the database upon which you made your decision is public. It should be in the record. And so that if somebody thinks that that database has some. Errors in it, they have the opportunity to address that. That's why you have a public hearing. You want to comment and so forth. The, the notion of ex parte communications is, is that if somebody goes in the grocery store and says, hey, I think you should do this. Because the applicant, uh, was convicted of a felony crime and, and, uh, something else and, you know, all right. Then, and that's not on the record, that, that is a, you know, piece of data that, that nobody knows about and that no one can respond to. So that, that, that is the idea. You're not supposed to hear evidence outside the public hearing, particularly on administrative applications. It's a little bit looser for zone changes and zone text changes because those are policy decisions. You're acting legislatively, you're not, you're not approving a particular project when you do a zone change or a text change. But, um, even though they're often very intricately related, um, but, but particularly in administrative stuff, you, you, you. You shouldn't have ex parte communications. You shouldn't do that. And you have to be polite to people, say, hey, bring it, you know, that, you know, I'm not trying to be a jerk. Um, I, you know, it's a great point. Can you show up at the hearing? Can you submit a letter to the record? Can you do something? So, so, you know. Uh, we want to hear your comments. That's why you have a public hearing.
It happens a lot going into Bethel food. Kenny, by the way, did you know I said, uh, public hearing, sorry, cannot discuss this. And people expect that.
Right, yeah, I think. Yeah, and, and it could be just encounters or people could send emails to, and if that happens.
Or neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, and, and if you get something, and whatever, you can just put it, I've done it, there's something, I'm, by the way, I'm a chair of a commission. Uh, I've been on the, I've been chair of Branford's Land Use and Zoning Commission since twenty fifteen and been doing alternate with other members since the early nineties. So I'm kind of trying to think of what you guys, I know what it, you know, I sit there, I, I'm in your position. And I'm, and the issues I'm raising to you are things that I have personally, you know, seen happen, so. Um, yes.
So someone is driving by a piece of property downtown. You see three hundred trees being cut down. And the guy walked, walking next to you says, what's going on there? Can't tell him what's happening?
Is it a pending application?
No, it's an approved application.
No problem. It's approved. Nothing, I mean, it, it's, you know, that, no one can challenge that, uh. You know, so you, you could say, yeah, that we, we, we approved this, this was the application, this was done, so forth. It's just during, while the public hearing is opening.
Right.
Yeah, while, while stuff is going on. And, and by the way, if it happens, the, the remedy, if, if there is it, is to put it in the record. You could say, I got this email, I'm putting in the record, I've done that. I just, I send it to the town planner and say, this is the email, put it in the record. Or, or you could say, and I would, you could say, yeah, I had this conversation, if you want, if, if it's, if it's gonna be an issue. And again, I'm sensitive to the fact that, you know, i- 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 is it a controversial application? A lot of times, the ex parte ones are, you know, because that's why they're, that's why they're bothering to talk to you, right? And, and I'm aware that ninety percent of the stuff you do is probably, no problems. But, but, uh. You know, tho- those are the ones you need to watch out for, the, the ones when people like me start showing up. Um, okay, yeah, so the, the other thing is, and so that, that also, once you close a public hearing, you shouldn't go. Getting new information, new factual information, uh, as well. Um, you know, I, I think site, you know, site visits, I don't know what you did, if you.
We do them during the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, that's the best time to do them while the public hearing is, is open. If you do them, or you don't, you have to, you could just go individually. Visit a site. But if you see something, I would say, you know, you know, you notice, hey, what was that? Put it on the record. It's always better to have things out on the record because what ends up happening, I've seen it happen a number of times, is during deliberations, people start saying stuff. And like, where'd this come from? And it's almost, it's a bit unfair to the applicant, wait a minute, they, we didn't. If I hadn't known about this, I would have commented on it, but, but now you're just saying this for the first time. And so that's why I, I like, I like asking questions to the applicant, at least having it on the record, so it's something frankly you can point to. I mean, if I'm trying to defend your decision.
Can I just elaborate? I mean, just for a little bit, just like with you, all the years with these land use commission and with the new technology and stuff. I, it never hit me before how they would say, don't do your own research after the close of public hearing. Well, who's gonna do research? You know, I'm not gonna go to the encyclopedia or something, but nowadays.
Right, right.
All you have to do is go to Mr. Google. And, well, jeez, they didn't discuss that. Let me look that up more. Don't be, seriously, do you understand what I'm saying? You know?
Yeah, it's too late.
It's, well, you shouldn't be doing that too. So then when you go back to the, you go back and you're in deliberations and you just slip at the tongue and say. Oh, I was reading about that last night and I went to da-da-da-da site with just an expert in that field.
Yeah, you gotta watch out.
You gotta watch out for that, you know, nowadays.
Yeah, I know, and I'm like a crematorium, you guys stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, there are all sorts of stuff out there.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and that's what, oh, can you take that stuff and then submit it to Dave for the Google Drive?
During the public hearing process, but once that public hearing is closed, you're done. You can only base it on what's in front of you.
Wait a minute, are you saying, you said, don't do research?
Right.
Think, if I understand your question, you're saying if I did do some research.
Submit it during the public hearing.
Yeah, you can do it after the close of public.
Do it during the public hearing.
Yeah, if you do.
Google information to bring into the conversation as long as, while the application is still open.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Everybody has to have access to the same level of information.
Okay. So as long as it's shared and open and on the record, we're good. Thank you.
That's right.
Um, I have a few more, a couple other subjects I'm gonna talk about. The FOIA issues were mostly, I think, Melanie talked about. But, you know, again, you know, you're concerned that you covered the cell phones at the meeting, that's an issue. Because, you know, they don't make a freedom of information, so I want to see what's on your phone. And, uh, you know, announcing that, that's a good way to preempt that. Um, what, what happens sometimes is that. If, if they know it's gonna be a litigation, an attorney, either an opponent or the applicant's attorney will sue a FOIA request to the town. And, and ask for all documents, including, and, and including emails from commissioning members. So, so, you know, on your own personal computer, your own emails, those are, um, public matters, matters of public record. So that's just something you know, you, you should be aware of. I've, I've been the recipient of a few of those, I've seen it in cases represented. Where somebody makes a FOIA request. And again, I'm trying to isolate things where FOIA may affect you guys. So, so be careful when you do emails, uh, that, that even, to, even to Beth or, or whatever. Emails about a particular.
Application.
Application, you know, that, that could be, end up going to, uh, a response to a FOIA request, maybe it goes in the record, so.
I would say, overall, mostly they're pretty good about that.
Good. Um.
Yes, it's just social media.
Right.
That's the.
I, I've been, um, in the first, I was here pushing for, uh, email addresses for all commission members. Make, uh, FOI requests even easier on the town. You don't have to go into your personal email.
Right.
And look for stuff, just give everybody like an outlook, like, um, uh, just for the commission.
I do not give out your email addresses.
No, I'm just, I'm just stating, just.
And that's, I mean, somebody could probably challenge me on that and I don't really care, but I'm not giving out your email address. Another agency in the town can do it.
Yeah.
Right. No, no, I think Salisbury, I, I do some work for Salisbury. Salisbury had, you know, for plain zone commission had zoning, uh. You know, had their own, town Salisbury, you know, Jill Smith at Salisbury. Yeah, they, they did that, but I don't know how many, I think commission members end up using their personal, anyway. Because I know, some, I know, sometimes they end up doing, but just, but you're, you're right. I mean, that, that, that would make the disclosure pretty easy.
I, I'm also like you talking about getting a, like a tablet in this room for reviewing things on the Google Drive, so. Commission members are on their phones.
Right.
With a few hundred dollars, I think the town should probably spare for a tablet or two, just to lay up there, just for Google Drive. Just, I mean, you could even hand it to them if a, a, a member of the public is, wants to see something and hasn't had a chance to review it, you could just say, hey. Sure, here you go.
As opposed to the site plan.
As opposed to, put it on your personal phone and then opening, opening up the FOI.
Yeah.
You know, even, hey, this person was staring at their phone, this commission member is on their phone, the whole meeting. Yeah, so they said, they said they were on the Google Drive, but.
Right.
Yeah.
I have no, but, you know, when it goes on, when we do it, I have no problem showing people my phone.
Yeah. No, neither do I. I'm just, I'm just trying to.
I mean, if somebody wants to get that contentious about it, then you know that there's an ulterior motive for it.
I, I think we've all seen people get contentious over little things. So I'm just trying to think that, that ammunition away from. Someone that might be thinking that, just by two cents.
So is that only if you're using electronic device or is that any time, because I don't have a personal computer on my work computer? So could they go to my work computer and then it gets all the old?
Yeah, i- i- if it is an email concerning public business, whatever computer it's on, frankly, I mean, if it's your work computer, I under- understand you, if you don't have. Yeah, they, you, you would have to, if you get a FOIA request, presumably, in responding to that, you would need to look at that to see if there's any emails about that.
I don't want to scare.
Email, it's the email versus the computer. So if I go just like, if I use my iPad to check emails, then I don't have to relinquish my work computer.
Okay.
It's like a scared straight kind of.
It is, it is, okay. In, in, and, and I'm just gonna explain my little, if that's okay with you. I don't want to take up too much time. But in our world, um, there are times when people request, if it's a contentious application, all right. Think of a court case over the last fifteen years, not anything usual. They may request emails between staff and commission members. That's me. I, my email is purged by council and by IT. And anything relating to that material is given to town council and he turns it over to the applicant's representative. The only time in my history of doing this, um, where personal emails, there was the possibility of personal emails. Being, uh, taken was during the target case. And they wanted my personal email, all my emails and Dennis Riordan's. Emails, and they wanted all of our emails. There was no discrepancy. It, it was a fear tactic. It was nothing more than a fear tactic.
It makes.
And so we said, fine, you can have our emails, we don't care.
So it makes more sense to make sure you're using a personal email versus your work email.
I would say yes.
Personal never checked, but I guess I gotta start, so, okay.
I'm with you on that.
If I have a work email that definitely has confidential information on it because of the nature of my work. And I never use that for town business, no one's ever going to have access to it.
No, they, they can't just ask for all your emails.
So look in your, your, your.
That email address because it is not.
Right.
But they go through the town and they'll say.
Yeah, I, I, the way I've seen this, go to the town, town goes through all, whatever, but also send it to the individual commission members. Have you done emails? Right, that, that are responsive to this request regarding the subject matter. And, you know, whatever, if it's your personal or work or.
As long as we keep them separated, then there's no issue.
It's like being on legal hold. It's like being on what we call a legal hold.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's something, I, you've gotten those things where there's gonna anticipate a litigation, don't, don't delete your emails.
Delete, right.
Yeah, yeah, I, it, it, it's, I mean, the lesson is.
Just don't put anything in email.
Right.
I'm sorry, that's.
Wouldn't be concerned about the content of the email in terms of being opened up to litigation.
Right.
Based on an application, because I am, that I would not do anything that would be harmful, but it's the nature of the invasive-ness of somebody being able to review that. Problematic. Not because I'm worried, but because of other things.
So with all these FOIs and these concerns, if there is a legal concern. Are we represented by the town? Or is that too general?
Generally, yeah.
I would say no.
Okay.
Well, well.
And one of them was the tart. Dennis and I were not represented by the town.
Okay, there, there are liability where the town is obligated. I mean, you're covered by the town's insurance and town is obligated unless. I, I mean, there's really, you know, real bad stuff, abusive, malicious conduct, you know, they can get out of it. But usually they have to provide some sort of defense and typically they would. You know, if, if there is a, you know, if they go to the Freedom of Information Commission, which is, again, it's not a money issue.
Right.
That's about, you have to get the documents and dispute it. You typically would have it.
Yes, town would do it. I thought you were talking about a court instance alone.
Right, yeah, yeah.
I thought you were talking about court, but no, you're represented when you go to FOI.
Right, yeah.
By the town.
Um, I think Melanie mentioned you don't want to have email discussions, uh, a courtroom with commission's email structure. Because that's a meeting, it's gotta be open to public, it's not. Okay, um, going to a few things, I had a few notes on public hearing procedures. Um. One thing I had is watch out for time limits. Sometimes I, you know, some commissions say, okay, we're gonna public, open up the public comment, limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, because we got a lot of people who want to hear everyone. Um, you can do that, but only if you say that. Um, you, you, you get another chance. If, if everyone gets through at the end and you want to speak, then you'll have a chance to, a second chance. You, you can do that, but don't just say the three-minute rule because, again. The, 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 the general rule of the world is, is when it goes to court, judges, they look at two things. There's substantive issues and procedural issues. Judges are far more confident in overturning a decision on a procedural issue because that's what the judges do, right? They're all about due process, you know, and, you know, they go to law school like that. But they don't know about whether the project's good or bad, and they're a little more hesitant to second guess commission members, as it should be, and they say that. So that, the procedure allows you want us to speak. And then the three-minute rule, someone say, aha, my right to speak, I've been deprived, blah, blah, blah. That's why you, you say, okay, yeah, I think you can do it, just so you get a chance. So, you know, at the end, if everyone speaks. Technically, believe it or not, people are right, allow the right to cross-examine witnesses. Um, if, if the applicant presents something and a member of the public says, I want to ask your, you know, your survey or your engineer questions. Um, I don't know how you handle that. Um, technically, they do have the right to do so. Don't advertise it, don't say you have that right. Um, they technically should not have to go through the chair. I know that, that's much.
Really?
Really, yeah. I mean, there's cases that's, I, I, I would, um, just, I, I, again, I wouldn't. I, I would not change anything and do it the way you do, because typically, unless they demand it and you deny it, then, um, it would be different. But just, um, you know, as I say, I, I give the right, so you're telling me, you know, that's, I, I've seen lawyers, you know, they know this. Because it's part of land use law, and they'll say, I, I want the right to cross-examine so-and-so. And they're just hoping you say no. Because, um, because then they got procedural. And they're just hoping you say no, because um because then they got a procedural claim.
Cross-examine or ask question, because we've been in public hearings where, you know, the public has asked, I never have public has asked a question. And then the lawyer will stand up, but then he'll ask the engineer or whoever to answer. And there has been some give and take there.
Sure, sure. Uh, I I I think they're functionally the same thing, cross-examined. If the lawyer's gonna use the word cross-examine in hoping you deny, they'll use that term to set you up for appeal. That, I mean, that's uh, but but I think that's all cross-examination is. It's just asking questions. Uh, and that that's what the word means. That's, you know, it's your turn to ask questions, the other side's turn. That's what you examine, and the other side's cross-examining. That's that's all it means. So I it's just, I I wouldn't change anything, but it's just something that needs to be on somebody's radar. If somebody's trying to set you up for a procedural claim, you know, I where you do see it, where it may be more prevalent prevalent is if you have a twenty to a nineteen petition. I don't know if you've had those. Those are more in wetlands than anywhere else.
Yeah.
Um, uh, but but what that is.
Yeah, the intervening, we have one now.
Yeah.
We we have.
Yeah, yeah. That that means what 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 that is, if if somebody makes certain factual allegations that a proposal will cause unreasonable pollution. And uh if it causes that, there are feasible and prudent alternatives. They can set forth the facts by which they they do that. Uh, while for through their belief in that, file a verified petition. Put it in the record, and they can become a party, which technically that gives them more rights to cross-examine. And and we had it, and and they could do it for environmental reasons or historical reasons, believe me, you know.
Does it have to be pollution, or it could be any sort of impact on a mission?
It's pollution. It's unreasonable pollution. It's environment. It's in the environmental statutes, and it's it's mainly pollution, although there was this, you can also find it historic. Um, we had one in another town I represented where they they did that. That, I mean, that was basically, it was a controversial case. And and that was um you know, and basically had an attorney, they had their own set of witnesses. It was almost like the applicant. They had like two experts and and you let them go on just like um, just like the applicant almost, you know, and and that's how we set it up and and uh they, you know, they took an appeal because it got denied, and they couldn't raise any procedure issues because we let them participate. We won the case, so um, but yeah, that that just, it's just, if that happens, you know, Beth or Dave and call me. Tell you how to deal with that, so um. Uh, okay, um. I don't know what you guys do about reading staff reports um into the record. I don't think you have to. You can if you want to, but you don't have to.
We used to, but we tend not to now with the amount of, like, say, if there's twenty people waiting to speak during a public hearing, the last thing they want to do is listen to a five-page staff report.
Right.
And also now with the video thing that we do.
Right.
Everything is uploaded into a drive. So after the meeting is over with or whatever, it's usually in the.
I I think that's the better policy for the reasons you stated. You don't have to. There are like two statutes that said their comments must be read into the record. If you had a separate planning commission coming on a zone change, which you don't, because it's a separate commission. And also, if you have a D E P comments on Coastal Area Management Act, and you're nowhere near the coast, so you don't have to worry about that. So I don't I don't think there's anything that you you're mandated to read into the record, but but I just, you know.
It just saves time.
Right, absolutely. I agree a number of percent. Um, expertise. What if you have a particular expertise in a subject, because maybe you're an architect or an engineer or have some, you know, particular something. Um, the concern is that you're basing your knowledge, your decision uh on some particularized knowledge that you don't, that you have, that isn't available, that the public doesn't know about. I think what you do there is um I think that you you can put your resume in the record. I think you've done that a few times, and and that's and and at least let the applicant know you have that and um and then when if you make comments on it, make sure you're not putting any additional factual information. I'm making you know, knowledge decisions versus factual information. Any factual information has to be in the record, but your application of that is, you know, it could be, I think it can be based on knowledge. So, but 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 that's, you know, put it in the record, at least disclose it, and don't let anyone because that 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 could be a claim, hey, look, you're you're based on expertise. I had no knowledge of it. You're talking about new stuff I didn't know about. So forth. They can try to make that claim, but I think if you disclosed it and uh and and you ask questions during the public hearing, that's even better than than they they've alerted on it. They, I think they uh it's harder for them to make that claim, because you you gave them your full questions, yeah.
You can disclose that. Do you mean in general, like as a as a board member or on a case-by-case basis?
On a probably a case-by-case basis, you know, for um, I I don't I don't know what what it is. There may be a number of cases where you should do it, but I'm I'm thinking of the Walmart one that where I'm gonna be called in, so it's gonna be an issue. Um, uh, you know, as opposed to your, you know, deck that somebody wants to take. Um, yeah, I'm I'm less just frankly, less concerned about those, but but because no one's gonna kill it.
I'm a I'm a I'm an engineer. I'm a civil engineer. I do drainage work for a company somewheres. Um, and you're you submitted an application, and there's all these drainage calculations, which I don't, you you know. Um, and you're going through and you say, geez, this doesn't, this isn't working right for me. There there seems to be an error. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, too, in this scenario. There seems to be an error in this. Well, if you've already inserted your resume into the uh the in the application, then the engineer appearing in front of you is gonna say, they're gonna look at this and say, hey, this guy knows what he's talking about. How come? But it's already in the record.
Right.
Yeah, what I'm saying is there's no surprise.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you're looking.
It's part of that transparency.
You've you've disclosed that you have, you you're a civil engineer.
Yeah, you have expertise in drainage work.
Right, and and you review this.
Design.
So you can't just say that. You wouldn't just say.
Yeah, like what you just said, when when you're about to comment, right? Does that understand? I am, I'm in a next this is what I do for a living, and I have a question about this. Is that not putting it into the record?
Yeah, that that may be good. It allows, at least you've disclosed that they want more information. They can ask for it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes. What do you think? You think that's all right?
It's, yeah, I think it's okay. I I you you can.
They're few and far between.
Right, if if you have a resume, you can just have it on file, so maybe if you need it or something like that, but um.
Well, and and again, if it looks like there's gonna be an issue with it, you can always continue the hearing. Next hearing comes around, bang, the resume is in there, let's, so it's in the record, everything's out the open. Yeah. About, let's say, for my particular instance. Well, you are a building official. Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. So do I automatically put that in there? I mean, what's the story?
I I don't think you um mean, can't it can't hurt. I mean, uh, but I don't know if you automatically do it. I mean, that's just applying a code, you know, technically.
Yeah, that's all. I mean, you you do have, because like even like there are a couple of things that came before that. Like you could see maybe something that somebody could do, but, you know, I mean. Right, uh, in this particular instance, see, um, um the zoning board appeals. Somebody, oh, well, they want to expand that uh uh foot this way or something. Well, I'm, you know, I know the code, code says if you did this and did that, then you would need to do it this way. You could move over there. That's using his expertise.
Yeah, and he put that on the record. That's great. I mean.
Or you could do that.
Yeah, I.
And as long as you discussed it, obviously during the meeting.
Yeah, that that's been anything you put on the record is great. The the one I'm more afraid of is, I think I mentioned earlier, is raising stuff for the first time during deliberations. And the applicant didn't get it. Didn't know a chance, but if you raise that, you know, all day, you know, you almost, it's better. It, you know, the more stuff that you ask, it's it's just easier to defend. Because we can say, it was all we asked them. They didn't answer. We didn't surprise them. Yeah. Um, participation of alternates. The 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 rule is that all anyone can participate in the public hearing. Uh, but once it's, once you enter the deliberations, then you you have the seated members, only they can participate. The 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 theory is that you have a, your your commission is, it's seven members or whatever it is for, I don't know what they, and obviously it's five, some five for the C B A, I don't know how many for wetlands. Let's say it's seven. Then if if the alternates permiss are participating, and then it becomes nine or ten. You know, which which is, even if they don't technically vote, they influence the outcome. And there's cases that that have gone up on that, and and that, and that's what the courts have said. They 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 made the analogy to, because this is what courts do. What about jurors? Because when you though you serve on the jury, you know, you have six jurors and you have alternates, and then at the end of the deliberate and end of the trial, they dismiss the alternates and and the just the jurors decide and said, oh, that's what it should be like for the commission. So, and and that that makes some sense, too, because during the public hearing, you don't necessarily know who's gonna be seated. You know, for the deliberations, deliberations may be a meeting down the road. Someone may be gone, be on vacation. You may need that alternate, so you seat that alternate. And I think the best practice is whoever is seated, stay seated. So if the regular member comes back, then you should they you should keep it, you know, if if the deliberations extend over multiple sessions, you you should probably keep that alternate as the first. I I think that's, I don't know if that's it has to be that way, but I think that's what I think the best thing is, is once you get the deciding that the seven people, five people are gonna do it. Because someone's absent or whatever, even if they come back.
It hasn't always been that way.
Right, yeah. And and frankly, I don't know if it's illegal. I don't know if it's illegal to do it that way. Um, but it it just.
Do it the way you're talking.
Yeah, if it's illegal the way that you do it. In other words, if they come back, then you let them sit in, even after the deliberations have started.
How often do deliberations carry over to a new meeting?
Oh, wow.
Yeah, zoning it does, and and when I'm involved, I want them to, because it wants discussion to let have staff write a memo, have another discussion, review it, and then vote on, so at least two.
Do you have an open motion on the floor for more than one meeting?
Good.
And now you're saying.
I'll stay where I am.
If an alternate sat during the first public hearing, and then the regular member came back and had listened.
Yeah.
The video. I get a lot of that.
Then what do we do?
Then the I think the regular member, the regular member is seated, yeah.
Wait, they've never sat if they haven't listened.
Yeah, if if they've listened to everything, and and they say, I've listened to everything, then they should be, I think the regular could see that, even if they never shut up. I think that that's, yeah.
That makes sense.
Right.
So you're saying an alternate should not speak at all during a public hearing?
No, they can during the public hearing, just the deliberations. Everyone speaks during the public hearing. That remember, the theory is is that we don't know who's gonna be seated.
Right.
And that's, you know, the the the, just like the jury, remember, this is the analogy, the alternates, they sit, they listen to all the evidence. And they can speak, yeah, I think everyone during a public hearing, and the case law is clear on that, regular alternate members can ask questions. What happens in my commission is because we apply this rule. Because we have an alternate who knows he's not gonna be able to speak. So he he says in the frame of a, you know, during the public hearing, he ends up saying, well, you know what? I think this applicant, you know, he translates it as a question, but he's giving his opinion. He knows he's not gonna be able to. I say, thanks. Thanks, Joe, you know, you know. So whatever, I think, you know, it's probably, it's on the record, so, but 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 I think that's yeah, you know, there are ways out. I mean, there's some cases where alternates did participate in the court said, well, you shouldn't have done it, but it wasn't presidential because he didn't do much, but but you don't want to go down, and they the cases have, you know, they said you can't can't do that. And that, the the issue is why would you get all to show up? You know, and I've heard this, you know, it's tough enough getting regular members. You guys volunteered, not like you're getting paid. And uh, you know, they they suffer through all these public hearings, and they can't, you tell me I can't talk? I mean, I've heard that. And um I I don't know. You just you just gotta say, we thank you, and there are times you are gonna speak, because, you know, I think you you will. I and you kind of get a little annoyed if someone, they miss all the public hearings and they show up, oh, yeah, I was they're 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 the elected member. They get to do it, but you almost say, hey, come on, guys. So. Um. So, yeah, what what I have votes, um, yeah, it's generally a majority of the quorum. So if you have, you know, you have whatever your quorum is, I'll give a majority. If you have um, you know, it's seven members, then you gotta have four. You could have a, you know, a uh three to one vote, and even though that that's good. Some some things, you know, that depends on if for certain zone changes, you need a majority of the entire board, but those are, it's generally just a quorum. Uh, a tie vote is a denial. Reconsideration. What about if you, you know, someone wants to reconsider? Can you do it? Uh, the answer is, it can happen. Um, you you can't do it after the notice is published. Once the notice is published, it's done. The decision's final. Even if everyone thinks we made a mistake, too bad, it's too late. But before the notice is published, uh, somebody who voted in favor of the majority, so if it was a denial, someone who voted to deny, can, for a good reason, move to reconsider. Um, and um.
Really? So they can request a special means?
They they can request it, whether you 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 have to do it or we have it, yeah. I'll give you the example that where I I did it at my commission. It was I I've seen it done for another commission, a less controversial one. One one was where we had a commission where they had something, it it was because they they closed the public hearing. Well, this is something different. It was it was they closed the public hearing, and then they rescinded the motion to close. reopened it for additional, that's that's something different. But actually, the decision itself, there was a decision on a affordable housing application, a thirty G application that my commission lost. Okay, so we got a, and we were ordered by the court to approve with reasonable conditions. We had it worked out between the uh between the attorneys as to what those reasonable conditions were, and they presented it to us. Um, the vote was, there were some people on record, I'm never gonna approve this affordable housing. I've said it on the record, I'm not gonna do it. Uh, and but I thought it was gonna be a three to two vote. I was, you know, okay, as long as we pass it, then there's, you know, enough people. You know, they 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 can get their face saving way of saying the public, I was right, I never voted, or whatever, but somebody was absent. And so we had an alternate stick it. So I thought it was gonna go three, two, and it went four to one. Uh, you know, and 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 this was in a case of an order, so I said um, right after the vote, I didn't wait for anything else. I said, I don't usually do this, guys, but um I'm begging. One of you people who voted in favor of this, uh, voted to deny the the motion, to settle the motion to uh rescind, to make a motion to rescind it and to approve it, because this is gonna be a layup on a motion for contempt. Because the court has always ordered us to approve this.
Right.
And I happened to have the decision, I read this, this is what the judge said, blah, 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 you shall do this. And I said, and and it's gonna be a layup for for the other side. We're just gonna get in worse trouble. And you you said on the record that you're opposed to it. Everyone knows that. You're doing, you're twisting the arm. The court is making you do this. This is very clear. So please do that. But I couldn't do it, because I was the one, they still wanted to follow the law, right? So um, and then one of the, one of the members had the brilliant idea, well, can we do it under protest? I say, yes, absolutely. I think, so they did. They 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 voted, okay, they vote to reconsider and to adopt the uh resolution under protest, so it passed. So there we go. Uh, so that's that's the stuff you, yeah, so um and, you know, no one challenged it, so what that. But yeah, the only thing you can't do for reconsideration, I I mean, I don't recommend you do it, and there has to be a good reason. Can't just, you know, I for it, and it has to be before the notes, so.
It has to come from the majority?
Huh?
And it has to come.
Yeah, it has to be for someone who voted, the 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 side that won. Otherwise, the losers will say, let's reconsider, let's reconsider. No, you lost. You can't just keep bringing it up again. So I couldn't do it in that case, so. Uh, that's all I have.
Great. They might have any questions? Good. Anything?
If we have future questions, can we contact you?
Um. Go through, go through staff, if you don't mind, unless it's about sending an email.
No, it'll be procedural.
I want to talk to you about that.
Yeah, not an email F O I.
Through my work account.
There you go. Anybody online? Your guys all good? All right. Oh, Eric's got a little one.
No, it's not a meeting.
She's my note taker.
All right. Thank you all very much for attending. There was uh
No, thank you all.
It was fourteen of you here. You couldn't see everybody that was here. David, we're gonna call it off. Um. All right.
Okay.
Have a good night, everybody.